Councilwoman Perkins-Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wester.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Rowe. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sten.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gold.
Aye.
Councilwoman Madison.
Aye.
Here, this is the regular conference of the City Councils. This is not a conference meeting, this is the regular, excuse me. This is the regularly meeting City Councils Incorporated in the annual meeting notice of 2011, which was filed by the City's Clerk's Office and posted on the local board of September 28th, 2010, since it is start later than our issued hearing, in compliance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Law of the State of New Jersey. I would ask Councilmember Wester to leave us in the fair and legitimate.
Almighty God, from legislating for our community, let's throw a sense of justice and fair play permeate all we do, above all, that in seek out your own adults. Give us the strength following, regardless of all human considerations.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Constitution of which stands by our nation and our God, in this whole liberty of the United States of America.
Thank you very much for this meeting. I would now want to welcome the first of the meetings, ready to be read at the address of the President, which is for the rest of the council, to be used at this time. Please give your name and address for the record.
Good morning, my right to counsel. The. I have been trying to find out the dates in which Marie Monde and Angela Lucio are to appear in court. The citizen, it's going to be handled by the state attorney. It's a state case. I did go through central intake. I was told to go to municipal, I did, Judge Wonders gave a copy of the complaints under the other. I, I have went to the paper case, I've managed office also, inquiring as to the dates, but I was not able to find anything. Lucio, Angela, and Marie Monde. I inquired for other with the House of Jurors Office, here, told that that's a state case in Portaleo, but most likely it will be in our Superior Court here in Elizabeth. I was told by another judge that typically, and she used the word typically, all these three people argue here together. And typically, the article in front of the judge for the first appearance or the charges are read, but a lawyer may bypass that and go to, to judge and follow the case. In the news article, in a computer that a young lady in front of mine took her time to look up, the newspaper article said that Marie Monde and Angela Lucio were represented by Fusco and Maluska Limited LLC, Limited Liability Company. And she penned, S. Part, is telephone number is 1973-779-1163. And the article said that there's any information that one may, when we get there, can call that number. And I and others with the one, was, is, and all this, and court, and public interest, and more. So, for my inquiry, I called this number, at the panel's office in Fusco and Fusco. And I'm not an inquiry, as which days the article appear, I was told that they don't represent anymore, and they don't know who does. I hope there is no more corruption or lies and dishonesty following this case. Big public interest. Peter Abitando is put here in front of Justice Yarceda, 11/10/11, that would be November 10th of 2011. For those of us who want to be there, typically, all three should be there, but we just don't know for sure. And this information should be available in Superior Court by now, but it seems that it's not. And it's difficult to get. For those of us with interest in this case, for any further inquiries as to dates that one may want to pursue, one we call the District Attorney General, Omar J. Alvarez, is the District Attorney, the prosecutor, this case on the top, and presumably the other two. And Kathy Morales, Central intake in Superior Court. And 918-659-5420. And ultimately, this State Attorney General, who's the first Assistant Attorney General, Paul T. Dopp, at 629-292-8740.
Excuse me, your role five minutes, but you should finish after the thought.
Right with me, sir, and I, it's not quite the new schedule, hold on, do you?
Your five minutes isn't the last.
If there's one point is out, anything more before me, please call me at 918-316-1401. Thank you.
Thank you, Bernard. Is there anyone else with questions for the rest of the council to be used at this time? Please give your name and address for the record.
Robert Trump from the city, in November, there might be some stuff turkeys. Also, November 7th is a general election. Now, there was a fight day from this day of New Jersey, where he decided they passed stuff ballots. There was an incident in Chicago, Republicans were complaining about stuffing the ballots. In Florida, there was an election where the Democrats complained that the Republicans stuffed the ballots. The Honorable Councilman Newman was involved in a dispute with Robert Jackson. I guess, I don't think Robert Jackson here, that he was someone who was stuffing the ballots.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Anyone else with questions for the rest of the council? They may use so at this time. Seeing none, close that porch here in the meeting room, and then we'll watch. Approval of the minutes. Drive the motion.
So moved.
Moved in second, at times. Rojo. Okay, the organization meeting, these are the approval of the minutes for the organization meeting, January 1st, 2011. Conference meetings were January 4th, January 18th, February 1st, February 15th, March 1st, March 15th, April 5th, April 19th, May 3rd, May 17th, June 8th, June 21st, 2010. Regular meetings, January, January 15th, February 8th, February 22nd, March 8th, March 22nd, April 12th, April 26th, May 10th, May 24th, June 4th, June 25th, 2010. Rojo.
Councilwoman Perkins-Dusty.
I'm in a conversation meeting, if you want to come in at this time, anything else?
Councilwoman Wester.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sten.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gold.
Excuse me, I'm in the January 15th. How many others?
January 15th. Councilwoman Madison.
Aye.
President King.
Aye. Who then we want to help here?
Ordinance number 4251, authorizes proper city officials to enter into a long-term tax-abiding agreement with Danic URC for Danic to Urban Pool Operation to provide an estimated annual service charge to the city in an amount in excess of $200,000 for 30 years.
Preferably, orders number 4249, is there anyone present who wishes to address City Council on orders number 4249, and may use so at this time? Is there anyone present who wishes to address City Council on orders number 4249, may use so at this time? Seeing none, close that porch here.
Ordinance number 4250, authorizing that Dr. 1256.40, the code of the City of Elizabeth, entitled Festivals, specifically to amend license fees.
Preferably, orders number 4250, is there anyone present who wishes to address City Council on orders number 4250, and may use so at this time? Once again, is there anyone present who wishes to address City Council on orders number 4250, and may use so at this time? Seeing none, close that porch here.
Ordinance number 4251, authorizing on coordinates, providing for the acquisition of various vehicles for the Department of Works in the amount of $2 million.
Preferably, orders number 4251, is there anyone present who wishes to address City Council on orders number 4251, and may use so at this time?
George P. Girardis, 4371, around Elizabeth, New Jersey. Joan, Councilman Goldman, Thomas Parkins, Councilman Jacobs, I said, now. I would hope that there is no waste of this $2 million, and I hope that the vehicles required are needed and properly done so, and needed in this hard days and hard times of festival disrepair and festival difficulties. So, I hope everything is truly like essential, and there is no waste of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bernard. Is there anyone else with questions to address the Council on orders number 4251, and may use so at this time? Seeing none, close that porch here.
Ordinance number 4252, authorizing capital quarters in the amount of $1 million. Authorizing acquisition of various vehicles and equipment for the Department of Works.
Preferably, orders number 4252, is there anyone present who wishes to address the Council on orders number 4252, and may use so at this time? Please give your name and address.
George P. Girardis, 4371, 1111, 31. My sentiments are the same as ordinance number 4251. I trust that these vehicles for the Department of Public Works are of necessity, and that there is no waste. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Is there anyone else with questions to address the Council on orders number 4252, and may use so at this time? Once again, is there anyone present who wishes to address the Council on orders number 4252, and may use so at this time? Seeing none, close that porch here. And then we'll move on to petitions and communications. For the consent, my colleagues, I will dispense with reading of petitions and communications and report of state offices, and move on to ordinance number 43.
Ordinance number 4253, authorizing the establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for San Jose Bar and Market, 149 minutes.
Preferably, orders number 4252, would you please, move that second comments? Rojo.
Councilwoman Perkins-Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wester.
Aye.
Councilwoman Madison.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sten.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gold.
Aye.
Councilwoman Madison.
Aye.
President King.
Aye.
In the absence of our floor leader as Councilmember Wester, please continue. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Preferably, orders number 4252, would you please, would you please?
Ordinance number 4254, authorizing establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Joseph Ed Burton, 709 Homewood Street.
Preferably, orders number 4252, would you please, would you please?
Do it for both of us.
Move that second comments? Rojo.
Councilwoman Perkins-Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wester.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sten.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gold.
Aye.
Councilwoman Madison.
Aye.
President King.
Aye.
Ordinance number 4255, authorizing the establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Susan Sheen, 1073 North Avenue.
Preferably, orders number 4255, would you please, would you please? Move that second comments? Rojo.
Councilwoman Perkins-Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wester.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sten.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gold.
Aye.
Councilwoman Madison.
Aye.
President King.
Aye, orders number 4250.
Ordinance number 4256, rescind ordinance number 3228, Dr. July 26th, 2011. Would authorize the establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Joseph Ed Burton, 709 Homewood Street.
Preferably, orders number 4252, would you please, would you please?
Do it for both of us.
Move that second comments? Rojo.
Councilwoman Perkins-Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wester.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sten.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gold.
Aye.
Councilwoman Madison.
Aye.
President King.
Aye, orders number 4250.
Ordinance number 4257, rescind ordinance number 4229, Dr. July 26th, 2011. Would authorize the establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Francis Del Montes, 461 Franklin Street.
Preferably, orders number 4252, would you please, would you please?
Do it for both of us.
Move that second comments? Rojo.
Councilwoman Perkins-Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wester.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sten.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gold.
Aye.
Councilwoman Madison.
Aye.
President King.
Aye, orders number 4250.
Public hearing, for considerations before going, ordinances shall take place in the City Council meetings to be held Tuesday, October 25th, 2011, at 7:30 AM. And then we'll move on to ordinances on final passage.
Ordinance number 4249, authorizing proper city officials to enter into a long-term tax-abiding agreement with Danic URC for Danic to Urban Pool Operation to provide an estimated annual service charge to the city in an amount in excess of $200,000 for 30 years.
Preferably, orders number 4249, would you please, would you please?
Do it for both of us.
Move that second comments? Seeing none, Rojo.
Councilwoman Perkins-Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wester.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sten.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gold.
Aye.
Councilwoman Madison.
Aye.
President King.
Aye, orders number 4250.
Ordinance number 4250, authorizing amendment to Chapter 1256.40, the code of the City of Elizabeth, entitled Festivals, specifically to amend license fees.
Preferably, orders number 4250, would you please, would you please? Move that second comments? Rojo.
Councilwoman Perkins-Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wester.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sten.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gold.
Aye.
Councilwoman Madison.
Aye.
President King.
Aye, orders number 4250.
Ordinance number 4251, authorizing on coordinates, providing for the acquisition of various vehicles for the Department of Works in the amount of $2 million.
Preferably, orders number 4252, would you please, would you please?
Do it for both of us.
Move that second comments? Seeing none, Rojo.
Councilwoman Perkins-Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wester.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sten.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gold.
Aye.
Councilwoman Madison.
Aye.
President King.
Aye, orders number 4250.
Ordinance number 4252, authorizing capital quarters in the amount of $1 million. Authorizing the acquisition of various vehicles and equipment for the Department of Works.
Preferably, orders number 4252, would you please, would you please?
Do it for both of us.
Move that second comments? Rojo.
Councilwoman Perkins-Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wester.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sten.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gold.
Aye.
Councilwoman Madison.
Aye.
President King.
Aye, orders number 4250.
And then we'll move on to the next.
Authorize temporary emergency corporations for the 2012 fiscal year municipal super utility budgets in the amount of $13,148.80. Approve the city's fiscal year 2010 current evacuation plan from Compton with fiscal year 2010 order report. Confirm the reports of reacquisition of honorable then J. Russell to service temporarily judges in municipal court or turn for one year condensed in November 1st, 2011, and on October 31st, 2012, in an amount not to exceed $60,000. Authorize proper city officials to execute the calls sharing of range of county union for traffic signals at the vulnerable locations, McGee Avenue and Galway County Road, Lincoln Avenue and Union Avenue, McGee Avenue and Sun Road.
Preferably, orders number 4252, would you please, would you please?
Move the rest of the call over.
Move that second comments? Rojo.
Councilwoman Perkins-Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wester.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sten.
Aye.
Councilwoman Goldman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Madison.
Aye.
President King.
Aye, resolutions passed.
Authorize the oil contract to City Engineering Engine National, Fredrick Maryland, to provide maintenance service for UPS systems located in the police and fire departments for a period of 20 years at a cost of $45,000. Authorize the oil contract to National Truck Company, New York, New Jersey, for the purchase of fuel oil for the public works arena for the period of June 1st, 2011 to January 31st, 2012, at a cost of $45,000. Authorize the oil contract to Public Service Electric and Gas Company, Somerset, New Jersey, for the installation of new traffic lights at Moore Street, Orwell, Pleasant West, Jersey Street, at Union Street, Elizabeth Town Plaza, in the amount of $17,445.93. Authorize the oil contract to Guarding Street Highway Products, by Union, New Jersey, for the purchase of reflective shading for the Department of Public Works for the periods of September 30, 2011, and February 29, 2012, at a cost of $30,000. Authorize proper city officials to accept any use funds from municipal trust fund in the amount of $200,000 to purchase six, 2011, foreign Crown Victoria Police Interceptors and equipment as replaced with vehicles from Winter Ford, Cherry Hill, New Jersey. Authorize the oil contract to Delta Products Sterling, New Jersey, for oil of parts for heading to new homes for battery extra apartments for the periods of September 29, 2011, and March 17, 2012, at a cost of $5,000.
Preferably, orders number 4252, would you please, would you please? Move that second comments? Rojo.
Councilwoman Perkins-Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wester.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sten.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gold.
Aye.
Councilwoman Madison.
Aye.
President King.
Aye, resolutions passed.
Authorize the oil contract to Sunset Valley Corporation, Air, New Jersey, for dump truck bodies and associated parts and pairs for five, 1994, tan trucks for the Department of Public Works at a cost of $150,000. Rescind the resolution adopted by August 23, 2011, authorizing the use of the City of Elizabeth's own assistance funds in the amount of $297,900 to provide funding for customer service skills training initiative program Phase Four at the Jersey Gardens Mall. Authorize proper city officials to enter into a contract with Union County College Board for written enterprise own authority proposal for the use of the City of Elizabeth's own assistance funds in the amount of $297,900 to implement Phase Four of the Customer Service Skills Training Initiative Program at Jersey Gardens Mall for the period August 21, 2011, through August 31, 2012. Authorize proper city officials to execute all appropriate documents related to the New Jersey Department of Transportation's federal project agreement to provide funding in the amount of $537,814 when the Elizabeth Avenue Streetscape Project, Age Two, from Chapman Street to One and Nine Overpass. Authorize the oil contract to Hatch Hall McDonald, Milburn, New Jersey, to provide construction management services in connection with the South Street Flood Control Project at a cost of $122,000. And for the North Avenue Flood Control Project at a cost of $194,000.
Preferably, orders number 4252, would you please, would you please? Move that second comments?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
President, I must say, as always, when I always ask Director Petty from the Public Works Department for information, he has always come through for me, and he's provided me with this huge packet of information. I just want to thank him so very much for providing me with this information. It gives me information on mileage that I requested. It gives me a breakdown of approximately how much it costs to service each truck as I requested. He has included all of the invoices for repair. And he even did as far as telling me how much it would cost to buy them again. And to tell you the truth, Mr. President, for $150,000 for the dump bodies, you probably would be saving about $1.4, $1.5 million dollars, because each one of those trucks, brand new, could cost well $155,000. And that's not all, the parts and all the special things and bells and whistles that go with it. So, I'm, I'm happy with the information that the director gave me. I know there are complaints about, because I gave the information, both to the City Council, it's not a bad thing. But I must say, I've never had a problem with the director, so I'm not, but I'm also the business administrator and the mayor, so I was contacting them also as that can improve. Now, last week at the meeting, that will discuss this, where I brought up issues of, Councilman Goldman, issue of salt issues. And then he mentioned, I saw the pictures of the old truck and what the new truck was like. And there is no doubt that salt does affect body control, and I'm sure it affects under part of the truck also. And it's also good to know that these trucks are only used for snowstorms, they're only on snowstorms. So, the magnitude of these trucks is rather low. So, it's, it's, it's a good thing, and I would be supporting that resolution.
Councilwoman Jacobs, thank you very much for the comments, will be very well received by the administration, thank you, sir.
Other comments?
President, Councilwoman Gonzalez. I'd like to also thank the administration, and specifically, the Public Works Director, for moving forward on the South Street Flood Control Project and all this hopefully awarded this evening. Construction management services in connection with that is something that's slowly going over there to the second ward, located under the train trucks on the South Street and the West Street. And it would be a great benefit to not only the residents in that area, but all of the traveling, who flew that area that had come back and forth. It's used for very busy street underpasses that it uses, and it will be money very well spent. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, your comments, Councilman. Other comments?
Mr. President.
Councilman Goldman.
Yeah, I'd also echo what my colleague in the second ward, but flip it true that they moved forward on an identity. And in my meeting last Thursday, at the second, and I mentioned to you, when all those there were there, and they were excited. Because this condition hasn't been existing, I guess, for, I thought it was only 40 years, they said, that's been over a moment and then. So, it's been a long time, and I'm only, and I just think wait until they get started, I'd like to. So, it would be money well spent, and, and, and peoples in that area would certainly be more than happy. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Other comments? Seeing none, Rojo.
Councilwoman Perkins-Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wester.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sten.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gold.
Aye.
Councilwoman Madison.
Aye.
President King.
Aye, orders number 4250.
Authorize the oil contract to Hatch Hall McDonald, Milburn, New Jersey, to provide construction management services in connection with the 30 Avenue Flood Control Project at a cost of $252,000. Authorize the oil contract to International Salt Company, Clark, Southern Pennsylvania, for the purchase of all of our salts for the Department of Works for the period of November 30, 2011, and October 31, 2012, at a cost of $334,200. Amendment to resolution adopted by October 26, 2010, which would authorize the oil contract to the land of salt, including purchase of all the truck bulk under the Union County Co-op for the Department of Works at a cost of $348,250, specifically to increase the contract amount by an additional $225,000, raising the amount of the contract to $573,250. Authorize change order number one to contract order to Richard's Sea Zerdite Builders for the construction. certified builders for the construction of the Mickey Walker Spring Park facility at a cost of $79,574,150, specifically to provide an additional structure and pavement tables at a cost of $25,300, raising the contract amount to $725,874,95. Authorize proper city officials to execute all documents necessary to provide an owner occupied deferred payment loan to the area each facet on the property located at ten eighty-eight William Street in an amount not to exceed $20,000. Authorize the proper city officials to permit pool lines golden line that will see New Brunswick to operate as an autobus pursuant to chapter five one sixteen of code of City of Elizabeth, traveling to and from Monroe Township, New Jersey, and utilizing the parking vans at three seventy, Del Land Street, New Brunswick.
If we're reading any resolutions, would you like it?
Do the resolutions for both of us, President.
Move that second comment.
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Jacobs.
President, I was told not to vote a few weeks ago. Be excusing myself of requiring the change order number one on the Mickey Walker Spring Park. I gave you my reason and I stated that reason today. I do believe that the pool should have been replaced. It's now up to $725,000. If I recall correctly, I should have pulled the cost of the pool would have been about somewhere in the city of 1.5 million. And I do believe that all cash should be announced.
Other comments?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Gonzalez. President, I'd like to say down here that we are stopping on rock salt for coming winter, as you know, we had a record snowfall this past winter and unfortunately completed on rock salt. And we had to go out and look for rock salt and we were delaying in rock salt because of what we had to do with some additional salt. So I'm happy to see that we are prepared and hoping that we don't have to use it like we needed in last year. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Councilman Gonzalez. Comments?
Mr. President.
Councilman Gollum.
I'd like to just briefly on this spring park, we rise again. Prices are obviously increasing a bit. After opening the spring park, so long well, we see in separate in that area. And in fact, to a lot of people spread the air that some of those have been probably down the line. They came to me and called me and thanked me for a job we done in the area. Not by major personnel, but the contractor that had ready for a job in the area. And those people, not only just the youth in the area, those students, that's where it's coming from. Their students came in and they wanted extra big dictator in a shady area because we didn't provide that for them because we didn't think it was needed. But since they go, they asked for a big dictator in a more shady area because their efforts seemed like more than the kids. And for Mr. President, first time, first time since we had that area open, first time we've got a white woman jumping fence in. That's just one of all those residents in that area that just called me saying thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
This is great, ladies. Thank you, Councilman Gollum. Other comments? Seeing none, roll.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Westen.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
I'm excused on the straight work, my goodness.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sven.
Aye.
Councilman Gollum.
Aye.
Councilman Madison.
Aye.
President Keating.
Aye, Resolutions passed.
Authorize the tax collector to credit senior citizen disability and/or veteran tax deductions for the tax year two thousand eleven pursuant to a delineated list submitted October thirty, two thousand eleven, in the total amount of $1,750. Establish means for the removal and disposal of debris on properties listed on Schedule A on file on City Exchange Office in the total amount of $6,180.79. Authorize a resolution to support for the establishment of a speed limit of 50 miles per hour and no stopping or standing along rural Jersey eighty on multiple directions, as recommended by the New Jersey Department of Transportation. Authorize the establishment of loading cells for the Reichen Street Deli located at the corner of Reichen Street and Second Avenue. We took the hours of seven AM to five PM, Monday through Saturday. Establish handicap parking spaces in front premises located at four fifty-second Street, one thirty-five, Broadway Street, fourteen and Avenue, South Main Street, two thirty-six, Lincoln Avenue.
If we're reading resolutions, would you like it? Move that second comment. Seeing none, roll.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Westen.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sven.
Aye.
Councilman Gollum.
Aye.
Councilman Madison.
Aye.
President Keating.
Aye, Resolutions passed.
Delete following handicap parking spaces from the front of premises located at ten eighteen, Hammer Street, twenty-third, Bank Street, ten nineteenth, Bank Street, seven, ten, Little Street, and six, twenty-eighth, Franklin Street. In support of National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, during the month of October, the City of Elizabeth will allow a tie ribbon campaign team to tie hot pink ribbons on trees within the city, paid until the end.
If we're reading any resolutions, would you like it?
Do the resolutions for both of us, President.
Move that second comment.
Mr. President.
Councilman Gollum.
I'm happy that there are times in the ribbon on trees throughout the city because it just kind of like, just notify people that October is the best council awareness month. And I urge everyone of age, please may I consider, if it's a check, because early detecting is by far the right way to go and to cure. Unfortunately, it has affected my family. And although it's under control, you know, it's something that we all need to be aware about places that be ribbon out throughout the city. It's just letting me that go to the city to check it out. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Gollum. Other comments? Seeing none, roll.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty.
Aye.
Councilwoman Westen.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jacobs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sven.
Aye.
Councilman Gollum.
Aye.
Councilman Madison.
Aye.
President Keating.
Aye, Resolutions passed. Are there any commendations from this board? Once again, any commendations from this board? Memorials, Dr. Francisco de Sevejo, Loretta Lesden, Alton Bowles, Josephine Morton, Charles Charlie, and others. Are there memorials on the floor?
Mr. President.
Councilman Westen.
I have a few words for the last one. Please do. President, I knew I was a veteran, I was from, I knew you for thirty years.[1596.61]